All right, we will call the regular meeting of the Armada Village Planning Commission to order at 7 o'clock PM. All rise from the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I begin at all clock please?
You.
Yes.
Shaw, excuse Patterson.
Here.
I'm here. Uh, I've had a jizzing. Here.
Okay, so we have the agenda for tonight. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, changes, do it now or do whatever you need to do. Motion.
All right, motion to approve the September 15th, 2025 Village of Armada Planning Commission Agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the meeting minutes from the August 18th, I think Becky emailed from everybody. Questions, comments, concerns, otherwise?
Motion to approve the Village of Armada Planning Commission Regular Meeting, August 18th. Minutes is presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, before we begin public comment, let me start with, we do not have Fritz Development at the meeting tonight. We are not discussing him in any manner. I appreciate that you all are here and will give you a few minutes to leave comments for us to all. Consider when we are ready to determine what's going on with the building development. He has not given a plan that is acceptable by the village as of yet. We are working closely with the DPW, the sewer, the fire marshal, and everybody else we can possibly think of to make sure that he stays in line with village organizations. So other than that, we really have no information, but again, we welcome your comments so that we have something to be able to go on while we are making a determination for what's going to happen with this development. So who wants to start it out?
Yeah, I guess I can. You know, I put together about 13 questions.
We can't answer any questions.
But my comment is, I like to read the questions and I don't expect an answer.
That's fine.
Just something that hopefully the Planning Commission will consider.
Well, yes, absolutely. Give us a few things to think about while we're doing this.
Sure, and I will leave a copy of this for you two.
Thank you.
So I'll just start here. So what is the target price of the 48 homes proposed?
Excuse me, name and net, name and net.
Oh, sorry. I'm Keith Lewis. 735-35 Franklin Lane, last house in the ring, not Franklin Lane. Before you go in the woods. I was curious too, will there be an HOA associated with these homes? So is the current proposal accommodate trash pickup vehicles? Who will be responsible for the road maintenance and snow removal? What is the impact on sewer and water supply for this proposal? What will be the route for construction traffic during build phase? What is the timing for start and completion of this project? Will school buses be able to access the proposed site? This is kind of interesting. Based on the last meeting, I heard that there's going to be perpendicular parking to the structures, the homes with a 12-foot lane going down. And I just did a Google search on a full-size Ford pickup truck with a full-size eight-foot bed is 20-foot long. And I just can't imagine a 20-foot pickup truck pulling out into a 12-foot lane to try to even it out there. Just a comment. Let's see. So right now, my understanding was that Franklin Lane would be the sole ingress egress. Kind of curious what the status on that's going to be. I did hear that there was a proposal for potential alley. If there's an alley involved, ingress and egress for emergency purposes, what's going to happen if the residents decide, hey, Pat police resistance is going out to North Avenue on the alley? Are they going to get ticketed? Will there be restrictions on how many cars each homeowner can own, given such a small footprint? Will there be access to the McComb Orchard Trail from the proposed project? Just kind of FYI, I rode my bike down Franklin Lane. There's currently 18 homes. Going down Colonial, there's 17 for a total of 35 homes. You can see 35 homes spread out on a fairly large piece of property as opposed to 48, I guess, townhouses and to a postage-sized stamp. It just, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense. And the other comment was that the gentleman that presided over the last meeting, he made a comment about, you could expect to see about 800, you could count 800 cars going across Franklin or Colonial in a given day based on the density of 48 homes. I'm not so sure how that math works out, but I'm just thinking, okay. That seems a lot, like a lot of traffic going down those two roads if that is the only ingress or egress. So just something to think about. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you very much. And you have a copy of that for me?
Yes, would you like a copy of it?
Yes, please. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment?
Heather Lido, 23604, Colonial Road. I'm going to cut mine a little shorter because he covered some of them for time. No, thank you. So through the 818 planning meeting conversations that sparked a lot of upset was comments made about, and I quote, "I've spoken to residents and they like the idea," end quote. I have yet to speak with anybody within our subdivision that has been asked their opinion on this development. The ones that I have spoken to are not in support of it for various reasons. Per the village council, President Mr. Conan, he stated, and I quote, "The planning chair has been talking with the planner and agrees that this project should happen." Not understanding.
I never said that.
I'll provide you, it's in the minutes. I copied it directly from the meeting minutes. If you are the village residents, you know, I don't understand why you would be speaking on our behalf at this point. So Mr. Fritz's property's been zoned since the 80s for 16 single-family homes. In the past, this committee has voted down plans for estimate 30 unit, maybe 31, 32, whatever condo project. So why would 48 townhomes even be considered? Why didn't you tell him at the last meeting, no, he wanted an answer? He wasn't going to, you know, pursue anymore if 48 wouldn't fly. So we didn't understand why he wasn't provided with a, no, it's not currently zoned for that. So we would like to understand that. Do you even have an understanding of what this property even is? We've heard from the committee and Mr. Fritz that it's affordable townhomes, it's a condominium park. We heard senior housing, which is it? Is it private? Can we walk in this park? Can the kids play on the playground? These are things that we really need answers to. Mr. Fritz said that he'd like to see the property rezoned to accommodate this project, just as we're, as a village, working with McKenna on revisiting the master plan. At the council meeting, I felt that 16 single-family homes would work. But then after reading our master plan, now I have changed my mind. And I think that if anything, it should be downgraded because of what is currently in our master plan, recorded by McKenna that states that Armada Meadows subdivision was recently developed in the southeast corner. Torrey Street provides the only direct connection to this development from Bolton. Rather than entering the subdivision from Main Street to the north, Madison Street, drivers are electing to cut through neighborhoods from Fulton to the west to avoid congestion along Main Street. Torrey and Hollywood Streets are carrying through traffic that they are not designed to handle. Moreover, they are inappropriately serving as a minor collector's street rather than their intended function, carrying local traffic. This may create unsafe travel conditions for residents along these routes. So I'm sorry, I know we're out of time, but it is hot in here. So, you know, we're paying as a village for McKenna's expertise. And in their expertise, they told us in 2012 that this was potentially an issue because of the current, you know, expansion of the subdivision. So now, they were correct. They were absolutely correct. Yeah, there is a lot of traffic and congestion. So in my opinion, I would ask that we actually revisit, would 16 single-family homes work back there given the current condition of traffic within our subdivision? We all understand this is his property. We all understand his desire to build. It isn't about that. We just want something that's going to be appropriate in scope to our subdivision and enhance our property values. And we do not see that at all with the 48 townhome community with no garages, no driveways, curbside parking, dumpsters throughout the units. That is not conducive to our subdivision. And, you know, we ask that you consider all those factors in. And we're going to be attending the meetings until this issue is resolved. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ryan Jerricks, 23604 Colonial Road. I'll cut mine short too. Okay, I'm a 36-year veteran of Detroit Fire Department and returns as Battalion Chief. Chief, I asked you to listen to the Fire Marshal's report. Rezoning or change in density is calculated, calculations does not change the fact that 48 townhomes need at least two separate entrances. One way in, one way out is never good. I have seen tragedies and results consistent with streets congested and blocked roadways. In my opinion, even 16 single homes is too much. My street Colonial Road has one side parking. As a result, I'm gathering for our holidays, my guests have to park across the street and down the street and walk to my house. Where are these 48 townhome residents and their guests going to park? On Colonial, on Franklin? Franklin has two side parking. But I can't even get my truck down the street sometimes. Two cars apart. Let alone McKenna's report, 48 more townhouses will be 480 hours more traveled through there. That's from the report. So with all this being said, it just don't seem to work. Take it all into consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Heather Babbie. I live at 21750 McFall. I know that traffic is, from listening, is a main concern, but my concern is the schools. I have three kids that attend Armada Schools, one of which last year really was struggling. I requested that he get changed teachers and I was denied that request, that all the classrooms were full. I guess my question is, is how is the city going to mitigate the issues that we're having with our education programs? It was one teacher against 26 students. We just don't have enough help. What are we going to do when we have more children from all the construction and the new homes getting built? That's it.
Paula Patero, 73722 Franklin Lane. The one thing I was really concerned about listening to the last zoning board meeting was when Fritz said, "Why don't we just do a zoning contract and have you zoning board sign it? And then whatever happens after that, I can do what I want because I've already got a contract with you." That upset me. And that was, it was in the...
Was that the zoning board?
Yes, it was.
I think that may have been the one from August that didn't go very well.
That's a really... Because he sounds like he's trying to manipulate you. And I know he's a good manipulator.
I thought Brian said at the time that that's not a good way to go.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that was talked about and Brian sat shot it down pretty hard.
Yeah, but his attitude and I saw his facial expressions, it was being a jerk.
Was that it for your comment?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Bob Peters, 73573 Franklin Lane. Please move here for the village.
What was your name, sir?
Bob Peters.
What was your first name?
We moved here to a small village. That's how you kept it. It's always been the place everybody loves. They use the streets to walk. Kids ride their bikes. If you want to come down Franklin, make it like a freeway. I mean, really, we've got elderly people, we've got their grandkids now. God forbid one of them comes out in the street and gets nailed. Everybody now, I know what you're going to say, they should be on the sidewalk. That's not how the village is. It's a village. It's not Roseville. Every condo, every townhouse I've seen has let out on a main drag. Let's say like Hall Road, North Avenue. They come out to go right or left. They don't travel through the whole village to get out on a residential street. Very unsafe. This is what we love about Armada. That's why we're all here. Don't change our way of life for a builder or whatever. If you need better housing or affordable, put it someplace outside of the residential. Put it outside a little bit. Don't put it on a, I call it a side street. It's just not, it doesn't make sense. It just flusters all of us that live in that area. What's anybody thinking? He'll be gone. He'll build them. He won't be here. He won't be here. And he won't have them by his house. So if you don't want them by yours, don't put them by ours, please. That's, 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 today's what I got to say.
Any other comments?
Calm and, this really flusters me. And all of us. Yeah, I'm not young.
My name is Abigail Donahue. I live at 23566 Colonial Road. And I really just want to echo what Bob said. You know, I moved to Armada of August last year. And one of the main reasons that I moved out here was because of the small rural tight-knit community that we have here. I think that Mr. Fritz building these 48 condos would definitely hinder that with the traffic, the kids in the street, and just overall really ruin the small-town community that we have. And just wanted to echo what Bob said.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Hi, Jake Fola, 22455 West Main Street. I may be at the wrong meeting. Is this a development for the west side of the orchards? I went under the impression that there was a development.
They haven't gotten to it yet, right?
Yeah.
It's on the agenda after.
I do have to go. I have a guest arriving soon. So sorry for interrupt.
Sir, if you want to say what you need to say.
Well, without understanding the whole matter, I don't know what the development is exactly. I just see a bunch of longitude coordinates on a piece of paper. If there was a map or layout of what the actual plan was, how far from the road. I have four children. My oldest is 11, youngest is three. I have a, you know, children at play sign that not everyone sees, especially people passing through. So for when you get to that, let my words echo also for that agenda. And just to know, like the layout, if you could provide something a little bit more, because I'm a visual person. If I just, I don't know what the coordinates mean exactly. If it's set back a ways, I don't know. Maybe it won't be a big deal for me. I don't know right now. But that's all I have to say at this point.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry you won't be able to stay for that actual part of the meeting. But thank you for coming and we will consider your comments.
And if it does happen, if there is some additional signage above and beyond the one that I put up for my children's safety. Because it's, you know, once they get past the creek, it zoom, they zoom away, you know? I get it, you know? I was young once, but anyways, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, yes?
Everybody pretty much covered. My name is Carmela Patero, 73722 Franklin Lane. Mostly everybody said what I was going to say, but I didn't want to put my two cents into. Biggest concern, people coming down that street, one way in, one way out. We have issues with people, like I said, parking on both sides of the street now. I would see, I could see more people coming in just parking theirs if they have more than one car down our street. I worry about the kids in that sub. We've gotten a lot more kids and grandkids that come over and visit some, and there's more kids there that live there now. It would just be, I could see an accident happen. I could see, I'm a retired cop from Shelby County. And I've seen a lot of accidents in subdivisions where these people just fly and hit these kids on bikes. It's something nobody wants in this sub. It happened just last week, this young man on Armada Center Road. There's another one that happened in Port Huron, apparently somewhere there's some kid got hit. But right in that area, there's a lot. And we have, we have a little six-year-old granddaughter. We keep a really good eye on when we ride her bike. She rides her bike, it's on the sidewalk, never in the street. But then, we have blocked sidewalks too. And there'd be more of that happening. Just because people won't be able to park on the side of the road, they're going to find, and then begin to block in that sidewalk again for us. That's my main concern. My biggest thing is kids and the safety for everybody. It's not only to end speed, right? Because people come flying through there now. And I could, 480 more cars? No thanks. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I just have a question. I know you're not answering questions. But you said that this is not a hearing regarding the Fritz property. It would have to be rezoned in order for any of this to take place. Does that have to happen specifically through a rezoning hearing? Or could it happen as part of the revision of the master plan?
It certainly couldn't happen as part of the revision of the master plan in terms of making a decision on a specific property. In the master plan, we can, I believe the future land use, before you get to zoning, you have your concept, your future land use. So if anybody wants to rezone, they have to rezone within a group, you know, within what is discussed in the future land use map. We're discussing the goals and objectives of the master plan tonight, not the future land use map. But that is an ongoing discussion. So theoretically, no, I don't even want to get it. So if the, in the master plan, we just say we only want there to be neighborhood homes that fit the existing, you know, pattern, that would be something that would go in the master plan. And then it would make it harder to rezone to something like a, you would make it almost impossible to rezone to something like multifamily. And I believe that right now, you know, again, the maximum permitted right now is 16 units with the zoning. So that's six, single units specifically. So, you know, could be saying it needs to be that same density. You know, there's lots of ways that we can discuss how the, like, master plan around that area can be set up. But in terms of the procedure, he needs to propose, under this application that he's within, he needs to propose a new design because the design before, which has fewer units, that's the only way that he can get approved under the current.
So I understand what you just said. So he would have to come back with a proposal that has, I think he said 17 or 18 units to be, to have a chance to be...
Right now, he is set to, he can have 16 single units.
They would also need to be, you know, correctly laid out. There would be rules about how the roads could be laid, you know? There would be additional regulations in addition to that. But it's not just he could plop 16 units wherever he wanted, just to be clear.
Ma'am, can I read your name, please?
I'm sorry, Donna Reamer, 73756 Franklin Lane.
So obviously, everybody in this room is heavily invested in what transpires. Like from a timing standpoint, when's the next time that all of us should plan on sitting in front of you guys and say, okay, where are we at now? Month to month?
You should stay in touch all the time, everything about the community.
We always post, we always post the agendas ahead. You can watch for Fritz builders to be on.
He's been here many times and he's been turned down. That's not right yet.
Not as of yet because he's still just bringing forward a plan.
And it's referencing the timing element. At the 818 meeting, it was stated regarding his timeframe. What is his timeframe? I don't understand how his timeframe...
The minute he can put up all the houses.
It's his timeframe.
Right now, we don't have a timeframe set for him because we do not have a plan, not of 48 houses, not of 30 houses. We have not approved anything that he's doing. We did state at the last meeting that we liked the idea of the type of housing that he was bringing in. No one on this board is looking for 48 homes to go into the subdivision. As I said, we're talking with the Fire Marshal, the DPW, the Sewage Commissioner. All of those things have to be taken into consideration before we can even come up with a number. What Fritz comes forward with, we have to look at. It's his site plan. We have to give him the opportunity to put it forward. And then it's our turn to say, okay, this isn't going to work, this isn't going to work, this has to change. That's the point we're still at. Because yes, he did come in with a plan of 48 houses. There was one with 32.
Do you guys negotiate with him or does he have to plan, send his solid plan?
He brings in a plan of what he wants. This is what he wants to do.
Go give and take. It's either yes or no, correct? Or do you have input for him?
No, our input is to say, this is going to work, this isn't going to work. You have to... He has to go through the Fire Marshal for the streets. He has to go through the DPW for the water and sewage hookups. There's certain things that have to be done just because he comes in with a plan. And even if we were to say, oh, we like it, I want 48 houses, which isn't what's been done. It doesn't matter. If it doesn't work within the ordinances, if it doesn't fit within what DPW can handle for water, what streets can handle, Fire Marshal is very big on there has to be an additional entrance. So all of those things have to be taken into consideration. As of right now, no, we do not have a plan that we're ready to move forward with.
One last thing. One last thing. He has no room for an additional entrance unless Armada Village, Village of Armada, sells him some property. He has no way else to have an entrance or an exit. So everything he offers should be just, sorry, Mr. Fritz. And that's it. That is the final thing. Because the Fire, I used to say it too. So Fire Marshal, you need to entrance and exit. Something happens at that corner during a storm, somebody's having a heart attack at the end, who's going to be there?
And that was part of the letter that we had given to Mr. Fritz.
Everything should be a no until he has a second egress. There's no discussion.
Yeah, it is something that's on our minds. It is something that we've given to him that it has to be there. But until he comes forward with another plan, we don't have any clue as to where we're at with him or how many houses he's looking at this time. We have no idea. So, and to tell you that you could come to the next meeting or, you know, two meetings from now, I have no idea what to tell you. We were a little shocked that he wasn't at this meeting, to tell you the truth. But he doesn't have all of his... I do know that he's contacted the Fire Marshal and had a meeting with him. He has talked with the Sewage Commissioner and they have talked with DPW. So it's all still... So it's all still in the works, letting him know what is going to and what is not going to work. That's as far as we are concerned. Yes?
I just, Donna Reamer again. I just wanted to follow up, because at the last meeting, I spoke to the clerk, because I couldn't find the agenda for the meeting on the website. She showed me where it was, but I also brought up that you could get a subscription to agendas for various meetings that the village holds by filing a Freedom of Information request. And they were very helpful in printing out some of those for me. They're easy to fill out, and you could fill it out and ask to be included in the mailings, emails, agendas for meetings and public hearings for the village council, the planning commission, and the zoning board of appeals. And they would send that directly to you when those meetings are coming out, so that you could look and see, is there a rezoning there, is Fritz on the agenda, whatever. So it might be something you'd wanna consider. It's a one-page form. It's easy.
That, that would be something for village council, but yes, thank you.
Yes, it's the village clerk that does that. She was very helpful with getting that information.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments tonight?
Don't be shy.
Okay, then we are going to move forward. Next item is the public hearing for 22600 Main Street. So at this time, I will make a motion...
Do you want to close session or pause here?
To, let me see, hold on, where am I supposed to be? There we go. So at 7:30 exactly, I will make a motion to open the public hearing for 22600 Main Street, St. Joseph's Church and Academy.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, so, for everyone's context, my name is Maya Baker. I work for McKenna. Brian is your normal planning consultant, but he wasn't able to come tonight, so I'm filling in. So bear with me, give me a little bit of patience as I'm sharing the background on this development. I accidentally said "exit," but it's opening the tab. It's right here. So this is a preliminary, this is a preliminary plan development review. So this is a preliminary application for them to, they provided a list of uses that they would like to provide on the site. This is our, this is a preliminary approval, so if it's approved tonight, they will still need to submit a site plan that has all of the details of the, you know, following the regulations of the ordinance. So they will have to be the correct distance from the road, they'll have to have the correct lanes, they'll have to have all the water and sewer, everything that our zoning ordinance lays out, landscaping, lighting, all of those things. Those will be considered if this is approved today, or if this is approved by the village council. This is a, the planning commission's job here is to hear any public comments about the application and then make a recommendation to the planning commission, or to the township, to the village council to approve or disapprove, and then they can go to the next stage. So the, due to the size of the development, okay, so, "The proposed development includes phased development of a residential area, church, educational campuses, and outdoor recreational facilities. Due to the size of the development and the variety of uses, McKenna has recommended that the planning commission review the application of a planned development. The purpose of a planned development, per the zoning ordinance, is to quote, 'permit a mix of land uses that may not be normally permitted in the zoning district, but would, under specific circumstances and convenience, be compatible with the overall character of the district and not be injurious to its building properties.' The site meets the zoning ordinance's planned development requirements for the area of the property, its ownership, its location, its land uses, and other conditions as described in the review letter that was included in the planning commission's packet. And it, we are, in our review, we found that it does appear to be compatible with the overall character of the district. The site is zone R1, single-family residential, but a PD would allow the mix of land uses the applicant is proposing. The full scope of the proposed development includes three phases. The first phase would include the development of an elementary school, high school, fieldhouse, and pavilion. The second phase would include the development of a teacher's residence and, I'm sorry, I missed. The second phase would include the development of a church, multiple outdoor recreation facilities, and a garage or storage barn. And the third phase would include the development of a teacher's residence and the possible expansion of the school buildings. If the development is approved during a preliminary PD plan review, the individual structures and uses could be, could be approved in the future through more rigorous final PD plan reviews, which would require site plans and additional materials from the applicant. So in our review, we find that, so the site is located behind the assisted living center. And the plant, applicant is proposing to use the existing entrance to the driveway on Main Street through the western edge of the assisted living center property, which would provide access to the church and the academy. So no new entrance onto Main Street, use the existing one. So most of the, the site around, I mean, basically all the site around the existing assisted living facility is undeveloped, forested land, there's, it's, it's a pretty open site. So the, to be considered a planned development, the site has to meet a few requirements. It has to be more than five acres. It is more than five acres. It needs to be under single ownership or control and be planned to be developed as a single unit. Right now, it's three separate parcels, but they will be required to combine it if they're approved. And then the uses that they're proposing need to be compatible with the master plan. The master plan calls for expanding the range of services to support future population growth in a planned and efficient manner. We think that the plans for the church and the academy meet this goal. They provide community facilities that would absorb a little bit of growth, such as schools and, well, specifically schools. The academy would be a private educational institution, which is not necessarily fit into the master plan. It doesn't specifically reference those uses. It needs to be designed in a harmonious manner. We do think that the, the, that the site is large enough to accommodate these uses without having a serious impact on adjacent properties. It does combine some residential and non-residential uses, but it's a very, it specifically says that no more than 3% of the gross area... Sorry. So the master plan actually designates this as a residential area. The applicant isn't proposing to do a lot of residential. They're proposing a very, very small amount of residential. So this doesn't quite fit the master plan, but it gives a little bit of wiggle room for that, because it's not necessarily residential primarily. I'm trying to, sorry, I'm trying to speed up a little bit and focus on the important parts. This complete review is included in the public record on the village website. The application has provided documentation and a general layout. It doesn't get into a lot of detail. The planning commission, if they would like, could request additional details, but the final site plan will be subject to review by the planner, by the zoning administrator, and all of that. We, we do think that the site is large, the site is definitely large enough to accommodate all the maximum lot coverage. There's plenty of room to accommodate all of those, you know, size. There could be a lot of open space permitted on the prop, like, there's plenty of room for open space, and they are not proposing to develop the entire property. They are proposing... Sorry. We think that the site is large enough to accommodate whatever necessary parking would be required. Although if they did too large of a, depending on the size of the facility, they ultimately decide to provide. The maximum height would be 40 feet. If they were especially far away from the property line, otherwise it would be 30 feet. No, there will not be any structures between, in, within 50 feet of a property line. And there will not be any structures within 200 feet of any residential district. So most of the buildings will need to be at least 200 feet from the, from the property line. They will also probably be required to do landscaping and screening in accordance with the ordinance. So skipping ahead a little bit, so our recommendation in that next steps. "The proposed project qualifies the planned development on the condition that the three existing lots are combined into a single lot by the owner." "The applicant should provide additional information if possible. However, the, the planning commission can make this, this recommendation of approval on the condition that, that the materials that we're missing are provided before the township, the village board meeting." "The applicant should provide a statement describing how the site qualifies for consideration of a PD and why a PD is preferred over conventional zoning. This statement should include a review of possible impacts on public facilities and services, identify benefits to the village, and provide details and reasons for any proposed modifications in the zoning or dispositions." "The applicant should provide a map that designates the quality of the woodland, wetlands, landmark trees, and flood plains on the site. The applicant should provide a site plan that includes building setbacks and elevations. The applicant should provide an updated site description with each of the uses phasing and detailed information relating to the use of the site. The current site plan and site description lists a cemetery as one of the proposed uses, which is a concern, and then they provide conflicting information." So you could recommend approval with the condition that one of the uses is removed. The application, the applicant should provide an impact assessment, if the planning commission determines it necessary. So you can hold the public hearing, if you'd like, you can table it, or you can recommend a different schedule. There are questions? The applicant did identify that the capacity of this church would be approximately 500 people, so.
Does anybody have any comments or concerns that they'd like to put forward for this one?
I just have one. I apologize. I don't know a lot about this project. But from a village's standpoint, this is a tax-exempt proposal, right? I mean, the village isn't gonna realize any taxes from any of this build, right?
I'd like to say something if I can.
Please.
We have one-lane roads coming in all four directions. And to me, it seems like we are already maxed of all the traffic coming into this one area. You have Sundays, you have churches already here, we have the flea market. I mean, how, I think overall, we need to start thinking about our roads coming to and from our little town. We don't have the infrastructure for this, as far as I'm concerned. I've lived here 16 years, and I just keep seeing the growth and growth. And you come home during rush hour, and it's, it's congested. So you take a Sunday and with all of this traffic coming in and then different events, and you have 500 more cars coming in on a Sunday? I don't know. I think that we need to think about this whole master plan, about all these, this traffic coming in and out. I, I guess I'm a little shocked about this.
Yeah, we are too.
Any other comments?
Real quick, what's your name again, ma'am?
Angela Hemby.
Could you please spell that?
H-E-M-B-Y.
Thank you.
Do you need my address?
Nope.
Okay.
Second row, yes. I'm Linda Chung. I'm at 74019 Teet Street. So my property backs up to that property. This other stuff, that's all new to me. I didn't know what was going on with all that. But I do have three grandchildren on Franklin Street, so I'm all on board with that, too. As that was coming, I thought, man, that'd be a good place, though, to put those 48, you know, townhouses over behind. So that's like that 22-acre lot, right, that comes up? So when you say they use the existing entrance, you mean the lot, you know, like, there's no entrance there yet. They have to put in the road, right? They don't use the entrance from the orchards.
No, they do. They plan to use this, a shared entrance with the orchards. So they would probably, I'm not, they would, yeah, the west end.
Would they be required to have two entrances and exits, or they can just use the one becoming an outlet? Because I, I mean, if you go past that property that, you know, had the big billboard for sale and the, the driveway's kind of marked off, but there's no drive there yet?
Oh, you know what? Well, this, this concept actually does show...
You do have plans for the new driveway to go in?
Yes.
Okay, I misread. I'm sorry.
We did seek to put an easement, to have rights, to put in a road before you get, coming in from the west side of town, before you get to the orchards. We would put in a road, there's a field, you know, a large field there. We, along that tree line, we would put in a road that goes into the back part of the property.
So I misread, but I said existing. I meant that there's an already permission to create a road there for whatever property, whatever gets developed behind that property.
It's already been set out for that purpose.
It's already been agreed that there can be an entrance there.
Okay. And I guess, and mostly, I just showed it, because I didn't know what was, you know, I got the notification. I was like, ooh, I wonder what they're planning on putting in there. I had felt like what Armada needs, so, is some condominiums or something. I thought there are too many, you know, new graduates trying to come back home, can't afford anything, too many widows and widowers, or, you know, just people trying to downsize that can't stay in the, you know, town they raised their family in. So I think I came here years ago hoping to put in condominiums at the end of Teet Street, which is where I own, but I was told that, you know, the infrastructure wouldn't be supported and whatever. So I don't have anything against, you know, looking out my backyard and seeing homes, you know, that, you know, that people I know can now live and not have to leave Armada when they, you know, for whatever reason they have to get, put that purpose. So this also, though, I didn't know it was a church and it was, there's a big, big plan. I, I, like, do you think there are 500 people in Armada that can attend to, like, we have so many churches, but... And the tax-exempt probably is also a thing. It's like, we certainly could use, you know, I just paid my taxes to spread out that, you know, tax base if we could, so.
I, I did forget to mention, and I didn't specifically say, the further proposed residential, they're proposing no more than 18 units would be, residential units would be on the property if this was approved and then approved again.
I mean, I do think some of the issues, being Franklin Street and all those homes going in there are alleviated, because it comes in off of Main Street at least, but...
We're jumping projects.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need to stick to this one.
Right, right. I'm, I'm just saying that I don't see the problem with the traffic being as bad as that one. You know, like, that I wouldn't have objection to adding about, you know, 500 cars. And, and you assume people coming in pairs, so it's probably 250 cars. I know, I know, but, but yeah, so, I, you know, I just, my two cents.
Any other comments on this project? And at 7:47 PM, we will close the public hearing and go back into the regular planning committee. So now we are on the site plan. For the same property. Right. Questioners? What do we got?
We have seven churches in our area.
The other thing that I would add is, is it's gonna be paying taxes to the village? Obviously, no, but they are gonna be using utilities. And one of the things that was talked about earlier, people were talking about the costs of utilities in Armada, and if we have more people using the utilities, that will spread the cost out and bring the per-unit cost down per resident. So I see that as a benefit.
Yeah, I'm pretty much that. I know it's not bringing in tax base, but that's, there's other lands for that. That's what we do, so.
Is that village or township?
Village.
That is village? Oh, okay.
Your village.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, and then, very first previously, that's all village, so, yeah, and this is all village.
Just, just a quick question regarding township, village, and we were talking about ordinance and that. I know it would help us with an understanding. So how do the township ordinances fit into the village or vice versa? Because I've heard different, you know, like, just hearing, like, watching previous meetings about parking. So I heard the township... meetings about parking, so I heard the township ordinance had, or parking on the grass. I didn't hear the village ordinance, so how do those?
They don't coincide.
They're completely separate municipal bodies, so they, they, you know, the village has its own zoning ordinance, and the township has its own zoning.
Okay, so if something is to be, so, there's no additional step with coordinating with the township or vice versa?
No.
Okay, thank you, right. So does the village have the capacity to supply that big complex with their water and sewage treatment plant, all that, is all?
Good question.
It just takes, wasn't there, part of the report was saying that there was enough capacity for water and sewer. But what, we're still, yeah.
I, you know, I don't know the specifics, I just have, many villages have far more capacity than they could ever dream of, but other communities don't. So, so, but typically with villages, because it's such a small area, it's really easy to get a lot of water and sewage.
All right, so I will read to you guys what Brian Keesey from McAllen has sent to me as a sample motion that we can build from for tonight's meeting. He has it worded as, "I move to recommend preliminary PD approval," which is the plan development, "to the village council for the proposed St. Joseph Church and Academy Plan Development based on the concept plan dated..." What is our concept plan dated? Well, we'll get a date before we actually...
Yeah, this is not an actual...
"The recommendation for approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the cemetery land used to, is to be removed from the concept plan and is not an approved for use for this PD plan. Prior to the commencement of construction for each building and use covered under this PD, final PD approval shall be reviewed for use as a site plan by the planning commission. Prior to approval of a site plan for each use by the planning commission, the planning commission shall verify there are no unresolved tickets or ordinance violations such as noise, nuisance, maintenance, et cetera, and shall ensure the site is in full compliance with any site plans that were previously approved for the property under the PD agreement." And then he leaves it open for us to be able to add additional conditions at that point, which would obviously be that each item or parcel that plans to be built has to come before the planning commission, water usage has to be reviewed, sewage usage has to be reviewed, traffic has to be reviewed, every single item that they plan on building on this property would have to come to us and be reviewed. I believe you're planning on starting with the church, obviously.
No.
No, okay, the school comes first. Okay, so that would be where they would be starting, but until we can actually get an approval from the village, we couldn't start with that particular item. But that would be our first order of this development.
I can make the motion, but I don't know half a way to sit.
Yeah, I will read it again if we're going to go forward with it.
Okay.
So this would actually make it so that it goes to village council, they would be able to look at it, say whether they want something like this in place, then they could come forward with the actual plan, the size, the density, everything for the school, where the driveway's going to be, what the access is, that whole site plan for the school only, would be able to come forward, and we would go over that and see if we can actually accommodate that portion.
Since, could I, I'm Stephen Seuss, Father Stephen Seuss, 23511 Armada Center. I'm the priest that lives at that house, although the church is no longer there. Can I just give a few words of, maybe to explain to some of the people that might not know?
Sure.
For some of you who aren't quite sure, we use, the organization that I'm with, St. Joseph Church, used to be up on Pryderman in School Section, and there were issues with the property, with water, with sewage, a few things like this. In 2015, one of the priests thought we would go maybe closer into town, so they moved, they bought a church which had closed down on Romeo Plank in Ready Township. They thought might pick up some growth, might have some newer buildings, and that might help things out. It is a newer building, it was built in 2005, it is newer, so it's nice to have something that doesn't be fixed all the time, doesn't have any water problems, but it's outside of the location where many of our families already were, which were around this area already. They traveled down there from around this area, but other places, too. We would like to come back and have the 23 acres to put on a similar-sized church that we had before, in a small school with maybe 100 students for various people in the, around the area, and then to develop the property in a nice, beautiful way to make a nice parish setting. There are many of the people who already live around the 15, 20 minutes area around and in Armada Village and Township. That's kind of our goal, is to put a small school with a small recreation center or a parish hall, and then to eventually build a church on it, maybe behind the Orchard Senior Center, somewhere our parishers already are in there, we visit them, this would be easy for us to visit, it might be an enticement for others to want to move closer to the parish and the church if you had that center there, and it's a nice piece of property That would just kind of give a small explanation of what we're trying to do.
If I could add something, ma'am?
Please.
Terry Rooney, a member of the parish, and former council member here, Delaware, for eight years. So I understand all the other dynamics going on, and retired police officer, too. Don't worry about 500 cars, the church is going to hold 500 people, you can talk to husbandless, and many of them have very, quite a few kids, so, you know, 40 and plus sometimes, so you're talking a lot less than 500 cars coming in, you know, for mass all the time. I'm sensitive to traffic, so I understand, you know, traffic studies and all.
Are we all good with Brian's motion to send this over to village council?
Yes, I am.
All right, then, what was our date?
Uh, July 1st.
So I move to recommend, oh, this one's fun. I move to recommend preliminary PD approval to the village council for the proposed St. Joseph Church and Academy Plan Development based on the concept plan dated July 31, 2025. The recommendation for approval is conditioned upon the following. The cemetery land use is removed from the concept plan and is not an approved use for this PD plan. Prior to the commencement of construction for each building and use covered under this PD, final BD approval shall be reviewed for each use as a site plan for the planning commission. And prior to approval of a site plan for each use by the planning commission, the planning commission shall verify there are no unresolved tickets or ordinance violations such as noise, nuisance, maintenance, et cetera, and shall ensure the site is in full compliance with any site plans that were previously approved for the property under the PD agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries?
Well done.
So now you understand that at each, each item that you're going to begin, I understand, you have a 15-year plan, and, you know, it's going to be a long process, but with each thing that's being built, we have to come, with a site plan, we need all the specs, the property, the landscaping, the building size, what's going in there, what the use is, and then we will also review at that time each piece of property that you already have, yes?
So just one quick question, at this point, the village council can say, no, we don't, we don't agree with this?
Yes, they can.
Okay. They're separating it to people, yes?
You also said there was going to be residences, housing on that property? Are they?
For their own personal use?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
We have a few people, a few priests, we might have a few sisters, maybe, in the future that live there, that would be our desire, that's what a house would be for, for a...
When I asked, do you own that property already, or are you waiting to find out the results of this?
We're waiting, we're waiting, we're just waiting.
So you haven't purchased it yet?
We have not purchased it, no.
Okay, so that puts us past the St. Joseph's Church, thank you very much for the occasion, it was a very big meeting tonight, and it puts us on sketch plan review for 74240 Burke Street, best built repair. We got you guys out here somewhere?
So Larry, are you speaking out in half of this one?
Please, go ahead.
Best built repair is off, repair facility repairs catering trucks lightly, it's pretty much anything to do with the catering truck, that's what they do. Not a lot of mechanical, more of the backend of the catering truck, there's no paint work, body work, just minimal repairs in the catering trucks. Kind of like what we do now?
Coming in, anything like that?
No, 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 no.
How many are you planning on servicing at once?
The building is only going to, the building will probably fit like four inside, so that'll be pretty much it.
So the vehicles are essentially step vans, then?
Step vans, one tons, the biggest is a step van. There are some trailer, trailers, like catering trailers and litter vans that you see, stuff like that, but nothing bigger than a step van.
And this is that your facility next door?
Yes.
Is it going to change the look of the building at all?
No.
Okay, is the statement safe?
Statement's safe.
All right, you guys, questions, anything, this one? I got it, I got it. Questions, comments, concerns, anything? So they are using Larry's existing building, again, as Larry said, there's no painting, no chemicals to be used, everything as far as, well, there's no signage, right, Larry?
There will, no signage right now, we'll have to get a permit to sign that stuff to the village on that, that is, they got to follow that, and then...
So everything is basically already there in the building for them to use, they're doing basically the same business that Larry was doing, only they're using food catering trucks and trailers. So if you guys got anything that you want to know, otherwise, we're looking for a motion here.
I'll make a motion as well.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the sketch plan review, 74240 Burke Street, best built repair.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, Larry, who we have here to sign for the business?
I can sign for it.
Okay.
The question, I know, what's Larry going to do with that building? All over the village.
That was a good question. Larry did know.
The other two. No, uh-uh.
We'll have to sign three copies. Top copy is for Becky's office. Okay, and that's his guy. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
How long have you been in your new building?
Since 2014.
Yeah?
Long time. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, you guys.
Hey, thank you for coming, and thank you for coming by.
Thank you for listening.
Absolutely.
Well, they adjourned.
We all live here, too.
All right, so that ends the sketch plan review, and we go into master plan review, and that is Brian, who is here with us today.
Okay, so, we provided this memo at the last planning meeting, but, so you've had a month, so we'll get over it a little bit. We're just going to discuss ultimately, you know, the final draft master plan, we'll have all of this content in it, we can edit it then, too, but this is for our discussion of the goals, objectives, and strategies for the master plan. So this is something we like to do relatively early in the plan, actually, we're towards the middle at this point, but before we get into like the final drafting of the document, we're going to talk about the goals. So each goal is a broad topic-based idea, we've got planning and growth management, residential development, economic development, things like that. And then each goal comes with a number of objectives, and then each of those have strategies, so gradually more specific tasks that the village can do to help pursue each of the goals. These are not intended to be things that the village has to do, this is supposed to act as a menu of activities that the village can do, or regional governments, local stakeholders, developers, and residents. So this isn't supposed to just be things that the village can do, it's a lot of things that the village can do, but it's also things that other members of the community can do. So do the planning commissioners have physical copies of the, these goals and objectives in there? I believe it looks like it's right there.
So everybody should have one, Brian gave to his last meeting?
Yeah, I have the copy.
Yeah, an addition of that?
Yeah, I already wrote my prints, my father's stuff, too.
Um, and the past packets for the master plan, probably?
Kevin will share.
Online, if it's not?
Do I have to?
Say nice words.
So...
There you go.
Um, sorry, so, so I'm just going to go through each of the goals, I, so, so I don't know if it's a good idea to go through each of these individually, but...
Which is how we did the ordinances.
But, so I think I might read each of the objectives, and then give you guys a moment to, it's kind of up to you guys, we can start, and then if we think that it's not going the way we want it to go, then we can adjust how we're going with it. But I think I'll read the goal, and the objectives, and if we want to discuss them a little more, so actually, oh, no, now my, we're documenting this correct. Honestly, well, I need to look at, I do, it's loading again, I just, it's, okay, now. It'll, it'll load back up again, it just basically has to reconnect to my system, because it's been sitting for too long, so, so... Yeah, okay, okay, there we go. So, first goal, planning and growth management. The goal right now, as written, is goal, "To guide, plan, and accommodate future growth and development in a manner that respects the village's traditional and compact character, respects the surrounding township's rural atmosphere, promotes an efficient and well-ordered land use pattern, economizes community facilities, and is sensitive to environmental features." That's a really big goal statement, but it is... But is, does, does everything in that sound like something that the village should align with? Is there anything that doesn't sound right to you? This is, a lot of these are based off of what was in your 2012 master plan, but with maybe a little bit of.
About dating?
Um, so the objectives under this, and just stop me if there's something that keeps your curiosity. Objective one, point one, maintain a small-town image in the village while allowing and promoting new development. So, A, coordinate group growth in the village and township to ensure that development is compatible. B, use the future land use map to maintain a continued understanding of the village's development expectations and ensure that new development is compatible, so use the future land use map that you're going to make, and educate the village's elected and appointed officials, staff, and developers, developers and residents about the future land use map. So I mean, just, we're going to use the future land use map, and we're going to explain it to people as, you know, as needed, like I was explaining in the, you know, meeting earlier. C, require new development to connect to village utilities whenever possible. D, review the master plan, implementation plans, zoning ordinance, and code of ordinance subdivision regulations annually with updates to objectives and policies as needed.
Yeah, that's something that hasn't been done before. So I'd really like to see this board get on with that.
Yeah. Create and increase village-wide efforts that provide opportunities to enhance and revitalize vacant, underutilized, or aging properties where needed, and reduce sprawl by prioritizing development and redevelopment of existing properties within the village rather than annexation of land of the township. I would say that that is maybe one of the larger changes from the last master plan. This, this kind of deprioritizes adding land to the township, and focuses in on things that can happen inside the town, the village.
Could you read the goal again, please? Ultimately, you mentioned it was just environmental. Are there other concerns, I mean, in your goal, you just said environmental. You didn't include cultural, religious, social sensitivities that could be addressed. I think the goal just said environmental, you're not, I mean, that's.
Uh, it said, so those are some elements that I could add in, but I mean, it says, uh, respects the village's traditional and compact character, respects the surrounding township's rural atmosphere, promotes an efficient and well-ordered land use pattern, economizes community facilities, and is sensitive to environmental features.
Yeah, not sensitive to anything else, just environment?
Yeah, so, I mean, so yeah, we can add incorporate, you know.
I'm just saying, I mean, and when you say compact, I mean, that means.
Dense, like, well, you could say that compact, you know, if you look at the village compared to, you know, the rest of the township, you've got, things are relatively close together, and they're created as like an always, you know, like a little, you know.
Within the village limits.
Within, you know, within the village limits. So it's really about keeping things within the village. I would say that we can definitely, I would, I, I think that the idea of the small-town character is maybe what I was, what we were thinking when we were thinking about like the cultural and social, you know, character of the community, but we can, we can put more, we can add something more explicit.
Inclusive, you know, inclusive, you know, not so just, all we're concerned about is the environment, I think is. I live in, oh, I'm Marsha Hollins, two zero one two zero, Almeida Ridge Road. I live in the township, but I do most of my activities in the village. Yes, Rose.
Past master plans have recognized the historic character of the village. I don't see that in there. And would hate to lose it because it's a significant draw, and we should maintain it in capital letter.
You know, it's not, the word historic isn't in that goal statement though, and I think it should be.
It is in here though.
As you agree with that.
Okay, so it's recognized someplace else.
Yes, it is. But no, community.
But in the goal statement, I think we should.
Actually, we have a thing about encouraging the preservation and, I'm sorry, of unique and or historical features. Okay.
Yes, so, objective, so, objective two under this is sustain a high level of quality and responsive service to village taxpayers through sound operation and maintenance of demanded community facilities. I will say that this first goal is kind of like a little bit more broad, and the other ones get more and more specific. So this is about requiring adequate public infrastructure be in place prior to any new residential, commercial, industrial development. Work with other public agencies such as D P W, Fire Department to facilitate improvement in construction of public facilities, road sidewalks and utilities, also includes the county. You know, require provisions for future sidewalk and road connections to adjacent property as it develops. Continue to promote a strong intergovernmental police and fire department. Continue to promote an effective and grown public school system, and maintain communication with the school system to collaborate where possible. And continue to maintain the village's park infrastructure and programming to the overall benefit of residents. So that was a little bit about, a little bit about the services that the community offers.
I'm going to interrupt you there, not that it has anything to do with our master plan discussion. However, it did make me think that I wanted to mention to you guys that I have begun very intense conversations with the fire marshal, so that we can keep them up to date with the applications that are coming in. Again, these are things that the planning commission, to my knowledge, I've been on since 2013, maybe a little bit before that, but it's just not, not something that was done. They tell the applicant, go see the fire department, go see this person, go see that person. I want to put something together where we can have all the cooperation right here in this room. We will be able to ask the questions that need to be asked. The public will be able to ask questions here and there, and we have people here to be able to make the answers, rather than just sending them off and wait and see what happens. There's too much waiting going on. I want answers ahead of time. I want everything to be discussed and coordinated, so that plans that come before us are done the way that we approve them to be done, not the way the applicant just thinks.
I hope your accuracies work.
Yeah.
Well, it's funny. Well, it's really funny you say that, because the next objective in this, the last objective in this goal area is improve public involvement and awareness in government decision-making.
Absolutely.
So regularly update the village website with latest information about available resources, upcoming events, meetings, relevant deadlines. When the village is considering major policy or ordinance changes, provide short and unbiased explanations of those proposed changes in order to improve transparency. Post-public announcements that are on the village website on a village-oriented social media page. That's, I think, a new item that wasn't in the last plan.
Right, right.
And then consider creating a monthly or quarterly newsletter produced by the village to update the public about recent decisions and upcoming events, and share that information with an email list. I will say, you know, the, the village has very, the state provides very basic requirements about what the village has to do to provide information to the public. So this is kind of suggesting to take a couple extra steps to, you know, share it on the website, make sure it's very visible, maybe share it on social media, and actually explain things, not just say, hey, there's a zoning ordinance. You have to read the whole thing to understand it. It's like, and this is a bulleted list of the types of just.
So that's why newsletter would just be online.
Did that lady that was sitting next to you, did she happen to leave the information?
Ms. Raymer?
For the, she was talking about the website for.
It was mentioned at the last council meeting.
Okay, so someone has that information.
That form, was it? You think she.
Yeah, she got it. She got it from Michelle.
And there's someone calling the clerk, and she said, yeah.
Yeah, she got it from the clerk.
Okay.
Michelle.
That's definitely something I would love to see put in place.
Yeah.
So, and along the lines of what I was saying before. Another thing that I've been doing is I keep very close contact with Dave Conan. Joe is our police commissioner, so we're working with trying to figure out what's going on with sidewalks, what's going on with the co-enforcers. I want them here at some meetings. You know, there's no need for them to be at every single meeting, we're wasting their time. But when we have applicants, I need people here that can provide us with the answers that we need to questions that we have. I don't want any more of this, well, we'll wait for the next meeting. Or things get approved without a full understanding of what's going on. I, I don't want to see any of that happen from this board. It's happened too many times in the past. We need to make sure that we are in full contact with everyone here at the village, so that when we have a site plan in front of us, we can answer those questions immediately, have a full understanding of the application, and what our vote is for.
I mean, it depends on, like, this site plan was easy, Larry's is a standard.
Larry, yeah, they're, they're doing the same things what was in that business. There was really no anything to go over with that one. But Chris, Chris is going to test our every nerve, our every. Anything that we don't know, he's going to get right on top of it. And I, I don't want that going on in the meetings anymore. I want to have people here that can help us. I don't want to have to say, well, wait, I'll call so-and-so, and then I'll get back with you guys. No, I want it right here, so that we can have the full discussion and know what we're looking on.
Okay, so the next goal area is residential development. I think a lot of people that were here earlier would have had maybe some comments on this. Um, so the goal is to maintain the current housing stock, and to plan for new residences that will offer a variety of residential densities and styles to meet the needs of current and future residents, and to encourage the development of new residences in a style that is consistent with the character of the village's existing housing stock and environmental context. And I'm going to get into, there's two like sub-objectives here. One is about maintaining the existing housing stock, and then one gets into the details about new housing, so.
Does it like break it down like to types? I mean, like, if they're going to have a condo, can't have the same. The footprint's got to be different than a single-family house.
Yeah, so this doesn't get into the.
I don't think it did, yeah.
The, just, this isn't, sorry, this, the future land use program, we'll get into a little bit more detail about what types of development goes into what district and things like that, like the footprints.
Right, so like those sixteen homes, you're saying, well, that's considering single-family where you got a lot bigger yard. But if they're condos, no one has the same size yard, even a detached condo as you do for a single-family home. So it's sixteen numbers, I think's now the other extreme of what could probably go there. Forty-eight's probably way, oh, way, but sixteen.
Sixteen is what he was approved for many years ago. And it wasn't a plan that was put forward, and they said, okay, this is it, there it is.
So that's a real old number.
It was something they told him he could look at, provide a site plan for, and it would have gone over. It never did move forward.
It was always meant to be single family.
Right.
Sixteen single-family things, yeah. So, I mean, to provide a little bit more context, at the, the village's housing stock is like ninety to ninety-five percent single-family homes. And at the, and what we want to get into in this master plan is that there is a way to allow other types of homes beside single-family homes in a very measured, small-scale manner that is applicable to the context of the community. So there are, when we, you know, so, so it's not, you know, put a whole bunch of units in one small area, you know, in a subdivision style. That's not really the character of this community. But it's like, you could, this, this would open up options for more types of housing. We heard some people at the engagement event say that they wanted more opportunities to downsize, that there was nowhere to move to senior living. They didn't want their kids to stay in the area, and maybe there were no apartment buildings for their kids to be able to live in, to stay in the area.
They only have so much property.
So, there's only so much property, and there is only, and it's not to suggest that there would be a massive increase in size, but if someone wanted to move to a new home and stay in the village, there is very little vacancy. There's nowhere for them to go. So the idea is if someone wants their kids to move in, someone wants to move to a new house, it would, allowing a little bit more housing, a few more housing types would allow for a little bit more wiggle room for people who want to stay in the community. So, this, this kind of, so this is to say that we want to encourage development that is consistent with the village's existing housing stock visually and physically, you know, in terms of size. And say, like, you know, if you wanted to have the same density as about fifteen units per acre, I think you have in the township, that that should be relatively maintained. Sorry, the village, I keep saying township, I'm sorry. So the, so this first objective is specific to existing homes. So, objective two point one, maintain and enhance the existing housing stock, encourage a traditional character, and prevent blight. So it says, A, continue to enforce residential building and property maintenance codes, continue to work with homeowners and appropriate agencies to identify and implement needed capital improvements in residential areas. That's things like sidewalks, you know, speed bumps, you know, things like that. Carefully monitor areas where residential uses are located adjacent to industrial or commercial uses, and require new industrial and commercial uses to provide screening from adjacent residential zoning districts. So that's to protect residences from really intense development that could affect them environmentally. Work with rental property owners to ensure they understand their responsibilities related to property appearance and maintenance, and encourage a mixture of lot sizes, house sizes, and architectural standards in keeping with the small-town character of the village. Any thoughts on any of those?
I did have a question. Two dot one dot B, continue to work with homeowners and appropriate agencies to identify and implement needed capital improvements. What exactly is an example of an appropriate agency?
We could be more specific there. I think that it's mostly the state, the Department of Transportation. That's the first thing that comes to my mind when I think about capital improvements, is because roads are such a big part of that. There's grants and things that are offered in terms of like improving, uh, capital improvement.
So M dot M D C, M C D R, things like that?
Yeah, yeah. But we can definitely be a little bit more specific, we could say, such as, you know.
That was more curious than anything else.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. Because I did think that one of all of them was a little bit fuzzy, vague. And then the next one, objective two point two, ensure that housing growth in the village addresses gaps in the housing market which are not currently served in order to ensure that the village can support a range of populations and needs while also maintaining the village's traditional small-town character. So that's what I was getting into about the housing types before. So, A, consider adopting a zoning amendment to permit infill development of moderate densities, which would be two to four unit homes and accessory dwelling units, when done in a high-quality manner, and providing sufficient amenities to support multiple units. This, again, remember that this is a menu of things that the village can do, not a list of things that the village will do or has to do. B, provide incentives and explore opportunities for the construction of housing which utilizes aging-in-place design characteristics so that people of all ages and abilities can continue to live in the village. C, explore opportunities to permit alternative residential developments such as cottage courts and cluster developments, which are intended to promote more efficient use of space and energy while preventing clashes of vacant features, and promoting more village-like character rather than sprawling through the subdivisions. Residential development must provide adequate off-street parking, open space, and other infrastructure necessary for the development of quality residential neighborhoods, and require residential development to incorporate a pedestrian sidewalk and interconnected road system that ultimately connects with budding developments to keep the development lockable and connected.
And we have a question from the audience.
We do, sorry.
I just want to comment on the previous, that three, four years ago, we had a effort called Community Heart and Soul, or Made a Heart and Soul, and eventually it got shut down because of the lack of volunteers to keep the organization going. But during the time that we were collecting input from village residents, one of the highest things that we got comments on was housing for older people, because they wanted to sell, they didn't want a big house, and there was no place to go. And they want to leave friends, they didn't want to leave their community that they've been in all of their life. And so, it sounds like you've got something in there, but it's just, I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that there is a need for that. I don't quite know how you do it, that's your job at this point. But there is, it was a, we had a high number of responses regarding that, so.
Thank you. So. I want to check in about, are you still good with how we're reading through every each one, or do you want to?
I think we're going to cut this in half, we had no idea that this.
No, no, I know, we didn't know that the beginning would be. But we, so we've got economic development, natural resources, and transportations left. But they're, you know, chunky.
So I think maybe if we just finish the objective in two, and we call it a night for tonight, and move forward on the next meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say table us until October?
Yes.
October twenty?
So anything else in two? You guys have any questions, comments, concerns? Anything you're looking at added, taken away, we're good?
Good.
Okay. So yeah, I think we're going to, we're going to put this on hold until the October, where we will start with goal three, which is the economic development. and where we will start with goal three, which is the economic development, and move forward at that point. Are you good?
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you for the transparency that I'm seeing. I appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you. Especially this reading of some of the goals with residential. And it seems to me that it blows the forty-eight townhouses right out of the water. Too bad that the others were...
But that's why we've been hesitant. There's, nobody has promised him anything.
Yeah, that's, that came through while I'm clearing. I am grateful to hear that.
We all live here. We live in the village.
I heard you say that before.
We, I mean, that's who we are. So why would we, yeah, we don't want to make it bad.
For the record, Cindy Bradford.
Well, thank you very much for putting away the comments.
If you ever want to read through all this, stop by and have a cup of coffee and you can read the whole thing again.
I was going to ask, is it going to be online?
Is, does this go online eventually?
It will be on channel six. The master plan, the copy that's available is the twenty-fourth.
This, isn't this on the website now?
I didn't see it on the website.
Oh, I thought I heard somebody else comment that too.
It says, I mean, it's not there because the website, some stuff is filed in places. I wasn't moving to see it filed under.
I will do everything I can to find out where things are and where they're going to be and let everyone know.
What street are you in? Are you in the south corner?
Right on the corner, yeah. We're on the corner.
Well, actually, were you looking for a copy of what we're discussing tonight?
Yes.
Is there a chance we can have someone scan it and send her an email or her copy tomorrow?
Call the office, they could do that.
I'll do that, I'll do that.
Yeah, Becky would be able to answer that if we can actually just make copies to pass out.
Okay, I understand because it's proposed, right? This is proposed.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, so I'm going to put this down that we stopped.
Okay. At economic development, that's what will be, to be continued. I will read on there.
I remember the title.
October meeting with economic.
Maya, how do I spend your, spell your name?
N E Y A.
Okay, just like it sounds. Depends on what language you think, what foreign language you're speaking.
I know, I spelled it wrong.
We have, next is reports. And I have a notice here that we were sent the bill for the bond payment for the downtown development. And it is thirty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And it is due on eleven one of twenty twenty-five, so expect at the November meeting, well, no, probably at the October meeting, we'll hear.
So that it's, yeah.
Yeah, that it's been paid and where that's when we vote and it goes to village and...
All that fun stuff.
Yeah.
Vote to submit it to...
Yeah, so it's here, get ready. The other thing on reports is I just want to say, great job tonight, you guys. I did, public comment, we've never had that capacity in here before. And the thing that everybody needs to remember is that public comment is exactly public comment. And you guys handled it very well. It's not a time for discussion, it's not a time for debate. We answered a few questions simply because it just, it really kept us involved with them. So I really, really, really enjoy how you guys handled it.
Well, you too. I, I like your leadership.
Did a great job, which is too lenient. Three minutes for discussion is per person.
And not every single person sitting there had a comment to make, so I don't think that we stretched it out too far. I wanted to hear what a lot of them had to say because we have been told from this point that village residents were all on board with what Fritz is going to do. They're very happy to see him building. And that's obviously not what's going on with people inside.
I would caution you guys that there is a group of people out there that wants development. Whether it's that type of development or something else, don't know, but...
Sure, people want more progress, but we still want that charm of our small town.
Sure.
And we want it to be under ordinance that we are not violating any of the things that were already set forward by...
There were some wonderful points brought up tonight. I really like the, the gentleman that brought up the school buses and traffic.
Mr. Lewis.
I believe that was who it was. He had some really good points that I think we haven't really looked at to this point. Not to say we wouldn't before he was finished, but we cannot...
There was discussion of that second, you know, alleyway, but we don't know, because we're waiting to hear what can be done. We don't know what can be done, so it's our big decision.
The thing that people need to understand is that this is Fritz's property. It is his to develop. We are here to make sure that he stays within our ordinances and does things that the village can handle as far as sewer, water, roads, to keep him to a limit of what the village can actually handle here. But this is his property. This is for him to develop.
And I think he should build a mansion and finish up his years on that lot of land that he loves. I don't know.
His, his choice to do, not, not ours. We are just here to make sure that he stays within our ordinances. So again, great job tonight, you guys. I really, I really appreciate it. I think it went well. That's all I have for reports, so if anybody's got anything else they want to comment on.
Can I get a copy of that so I know what to put in?
Of this? Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, next meeting, Kevin, is?
October twentieth.
October twentieth is our next meeting. I keep forgetting that before we, before we close it out. All right, so that's all I have for reports. Does anybody have anything they want to add? Last minute public comment, anybody?
Just that I have been asked by somebody on the board to talk with the, with the church folks. And so I did on water capacity.
Okay.
We do have sufficient water capacity.
Yeah, you know, I missed it. There was a letter here that showed he had had a discussion and that, yeah, for, for at least the beginning part of his, his construction.
I indicated that we did have sufficient capacity. He needed to abide by obviously current plumbing codes and would not support a dead-end main. He needs to connect that water main with, you know, from the entryway into a, another part of the water system, whether it's the senior center or whether it's the main over by, close to the Main Street Bridge transition point.
Okay, right.
Matters not really to me at this point, but...
As long as it's there.
We do not want a dead-end main.
Okay.
We're trying to eradicate that.
And I would think that would be, would that be advised when they develop? Wouldn't...
I think it, I think it would be one of the conditions that we put in that water component that you talked about. I think you said he's going to have to come in and show how this is running his water vein.
Yes.
And, yeah, so we would get more detail there, but that's what I told the representative.
Thanks, Chris.
That's Marsha Hollins, two zero one two zero, Armada Ridge Road. It's my understanding that during pub, public comments, they're just comments. And I've noticed that you all try to answer questions. So is it not true that we're just supposed to be able to make a comment and be not...
That is what, how public comment is, is comment.
But I found that you all were trying to...
We do, we do, we will.
And that's on the record. And legally, you have to be very careful with that. I know at a couple of meetings I've been with the village, you guys try to, you know, answer questions, but I just think we should be careful because I think we give a false sense of things when we, I'm in the township and our former supervisor was great at, you could get up there and, ah! Thank you for your comment. I got no yes, no no, no empathy, nothing, but just speaking and then you've been heard and that was it. So I'm just, I, I think that, you know, you have to be careful because, and there's no timer. I would suggest a timer because some of...
We do have a time limit.
No, I know time limit, but it wasn't followed.
Specific reasons that we answered questions tonight, we're, we're aware of how public comment works.
I know, but I'm not understanding why you allow some to go over the three-minute limit?
To finish their point so they don't leave angry. It's a couple minutes sometimes over, and she is the leader of it.
And she's okay with that?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm only three minutes in.
Not quite.
Ah, thank you.
Twenty seconds.
We are looking for that final motion.
All right. Motion to adjourn, the village or mayor planning commission regular meeting September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, eight point eight fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am.